We're going to start in about a minute. Mike's at work, he may come in a little late. I'd like to call this meeting of the Henry County Council, March 23rd, 2023, to order. If you please stand for pledge and prayer, please. Counsel, if you had an opportunity to read over the minutes of our February 23rd meeting, and if so, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Betsy. Any corrections, updates? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Uh, passes six oh. You didn't vote on that, did you, Mike?
Passes six oh.
You can vote on the others, coming up. Mr. Murphy, our EDC Director, we have a public hearing. And Joel, you tell me when I need to call the hearing to order, if it's now or after he starts introducing. Okay, call this hearing to order, that's required by law on the legacy feed. This is the economic development revitalization area, correct? Okay, because we have several things that there's resolutions on today. And I'm going to turn it over this time, the hearing, over to Corey Murphy.
Thank you, Counsel. By way of reminder, it's a $21 million investment, just under 13 million in building and just over 8 million in equipment. Thirty new jobs by the end of 2024. Eighteen of those positions have an hourly wage of $23 an hour, and 12 of those positions are at an annual average salary of 80,000. This is located at 477 South 600 East. Current co-alliance location along the railroad track. The project consists of a new feed mill, office, and grain storage. Your previous action on this matter is proposing a seven-year traditional abatement on both real and personal property. Notice was published in the newspaper for this public hearing, and the overlapping taxing districts were invited to attend as well. As already mentioned, at the close of the public hearing, you have a resolution affirming, a preliminary resolution designating property as an economic revitalization area, and also approving real property and personal property tax abatement for Legacy Feed LLC. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? I know you went in depth at the last meeting, and this is just the required public hearing. If not, anyone from the audience have comments, feedback, input regarding this request for an economic revitalization area, which is this site of Millville, correct? On the Norfolk Southern, where the concrete grain bins are currently. It's an expansion thereof. If not, I need to call the hearing closed, then we take up the resolution. Okay. One of these years, I'll have this down, I won't have to make sure we're doing it right, because there is a process. Okay, we call the hearing, well, during the hearing at this time. And Counsel, we do have a resolution that relates to this. It's Resolution Number 2023-3-23, today's date, -003. It's our third resolution that we've taken up this year. You can read over it. It's a preliminary resolution designating property as an economic revitalization area, approving real property and personal property tax abatement for Legacy Seeds LLC. It encompasses 26 acres. The parcels are listed in your resolution handout. And pursuant to Indiana Code, that's also listed therein. The Henry County Council is required to conduct a public hearing, which we just did. Whereas notice of the proposed hearing was published in the local papers, as required by law. Whereas Henry County Council has conducted a public hearing today on the designation of the above real estate and economic revitalization area. Hereby resolve that Henry County Council hereby confirms the preliminary resolution designating property as an economic revitalization area, and approving real property and personal property abatement to Legacy Seeds LLC as described in the resolution. Do we need to do an individual vote? Because I see here it has a yea or nay, or can we take a group vote? If there are no questions, are there any? If not, all in favor of approving this resolution, 2023-3-23-003, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes seven zero. Thank you, Corey. Now, your next seven and a half minutes are up.
Kennon?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We didn't have a motion, but I'd like to make a motion to.
Please do.
I'll second.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-03-23-003.
Now, I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Susan, seconded by Shannon. Are there any questions now, after we preliminarily approved it? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you for keeping me honest. Now, Corey, your second seven and a half minutes, we've limited you to on other economic development topics.
Did you hear that, seven and a half minutes? Or last. Any questions? Okay, thank you. There is an opportunity that I want to bring to your attention. It is timely. Just received this a day or two ago. So, the CDBG, or the OKRA certified grant administrator out of Columbus, ARA, let Kennon and I know that there's an opportunity to receive more grant dollars to help small businesses in Henry County. If you'll recall, the Economic Development Corporation served as your distribution agent in 2021. We did the same thing in 2020 for the city. A letter of intent is due by April 20th. And I don't know whether that's before or after your next meeting.
It's before. Our next one's, I believe, is the 23rd, or thereabouts.
So.
Twenty-seventh.
OKRA established a maximum grant award up to 250,000. And the use would be business grants. If we use local match, so non-federal dollars, we avoid the procurement process in hiring ARA again. And so, the maximum allowable for the grant administration is 2.5%. And if you do 2.5% times the 250,000, it's $6,250. Now, local match is not required. But if you don't use local match, then there's sufficient hoops to jump through to higher ARA. So I wanted to engage you on how you wanted me to proceed, and obviously, I would need to go to the commissioners as well. But you all are the fiscal folks. And like I said, the letter of intent is due before your next meeting.
Is this the, this was pre-ARP, right? Care's monies that we approved for, is this the restaurants or all businesses? Because we did both.
Yeah, this was all businesses?
Yes.
And it's money that OKRA receives and then distributes to local communities to help their businesses.
Was this the one where we can match at different levels to increase our likelihood of getting the grant, or no?
You matched it at like 25,000 last time.
Okay, and is that advised again, or is the 6,000?
I think the 6,250 is sufficient. Now, are we guaranteed the grant? No, but I I think if we want to do it, getting the letter in soon will increase our chances, because it's on a first-come, first-served basis.
And we matched from food and beverage before?
You did.
We did, and I do know the state has given high marks to ARA. That's why we got the second 250,000 round for the owner occupied rehab. I'm not even sure they advertised that to other counties. They asked if we wanted it, and we said yes. And I know from a fact, the head of OKRA said we did not have to vet if we went with ARA, because they'd had such good experiences with them before. So it probably makes them worth the 10,000 we pay a year, getting 250,000.
So I think it's worth the $6,000 match to apply, and I would be ready to make a motion for that. Do we need any paperwork ahead of time, Joel? Or could I go ahead and? So I make a motion to match at 6,250 for the small business grant.
I have a motion by Susan, do I hear a second? Seconded by Harold. Any further discussion?
Would this come out of County General?
From food and beverage. I'd like to amend my motion, that I make a motion to match 6,250 from food and beverage for the small business grant.
Okay.
Any other questions? I mean, it fits food and beverage legislation, which is economic development and/or tourism, so. If no other questions or comments, all in favor of him pursuing this through OKRA, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes seven zero.
Thank you for that, and I will follow up at the commissioner's next meeting and seek their blessing to apply as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. That was six minutes. Kudos. At this time, we have Michelle Leonard is here. And I think we have some representatives from some town councils, incorporated town councils. Some appeared at the Newcastle City Council meeting this Monday. And I see some others from around the county here. Thank you for doing so. This may affect you, but even if it does or does not, we thought you should know what's being discussed at the county level to benefit the citizens. I think we had Springport and another individual from Middletown, Menwley, that I recall seeing at Newcastle. But you're on, there's a microphone up there at the podium? Or you come up here? You just do what? That's okay, we might.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Oh, can everyone hear me if I stand? Is that okay? And just as an FYI, I'm going to have to take my glasses on and off, because my arms are no longer long enough, you know, that feeling. Thanks for having me here today. My name's Michelle Leonard McConnell. I am with the IU Health Foundation. However, I really truly am a Henry County girl. I, my parents still live in Knightstown. I grew up in Knightstown. My daughter was in Knightstown, grew up in Knightstown. And I was actually with the Henry County Community Foundation for several years as well. So, I am a Henry County girl, so it's always good to be home back in my home county. So what we're going to talk a little bit about today is, as Kennon stated, there, we've been having several meetings with some individuals here in the county to talk about an opportunity that really goes around substance abuse and mental health issues that I know we're all working to combat at this time. So, one of my colleagues, Jamie Marsh, is here today, and I think she and I are going to, she's going to chime in when needed. And our other colleague, Brad, is unable to be here today. I think he's taking off for spring break with his kiddos, so I think we can all relate to that. But happy that we're here. So just want to share a little bit about what we're going to talk about. Number one, the east central Indiana needs. What is the Muncie Crisis Center? And how Henry County and the IU Health Foundation can potentially partner. So first, the east central Indiana needs. I, I'm probably speaking to the choir here, that we know a lot of this, but just as a reminder, first of all, unfortunately, when you look at those counties, Henry County being a part of that, we are in the bottom 25th percentile for overall health. Not really a top 25 you want to be a part of, right? And within that, we have done community health needs assessments, not only IU Health, but also Henry Community Health. And there are three areas that continue to bubble to the top, which is probably not going to be a surprise to any of you, but substance abuse, addiction services, and mental health. So knowing that this is an issue regionally, the Muncie Crisis Center is actually opening this year. What that will be is a safe 24 hours, seven days a week, low barrier environment. And what that will do is, this is based off of a similar center down in Bloomington called the Stride Center. So what happens is, when someone is facing a substance abuse issue, potential mental health crisis, it could even be some type of home issues such as abuse. Instead of going to the ER, I know, I'm so sorry, I feel like my back is behind you, I'm so sorry. Instead of going to the ER or the jail, they would then in turn go to the Muncie Crisis Center. Those staff members will be IU Health operating those staff. So you will be all IU Health members, that team, and what they will do is, they will de-escalate the situation, and then work on wraparound services and where it might be the best place for that individual to go, instead of the emergency room or the jail. We know that probably not going to be a one-time issue, right? I mean, most likely, someone that is suffering from those problems, they're not going to just walk in one time, get the wraparound services, and walk out. So there is not a limit to how many times an individual may be coming to the Muncie Crisis Center. So who's eligible? This is currently for adults 18 and over experiencing crisis, and what I just kind of talked about, homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, intimate partner violence. And the goal is truly to divert them to service-based and public health-oriented environments, keeping them out of jail, keeping them out of the hospitals, and really trying to help them with the problem that they have. For those of you that have a packet, you can see that there is a flyer about the Muncie Crisis Center. I'm not going to read through all of this. But one of the pieces is, is if, just for example, if someone has suicidal thoughts, if they have a true plan, then they would go to the emergency room. But if they do not have a plan, but they are threatening suicide, then this would be an opportunity for them to go to the Muncie Crisis Center. So there are some stipulations as to what that would look like, because obviously, if they have a plan, they need a different level of care at that point. And these are just more pieces in which the flyer also shares the same situation. So, we know that there are wraparound services that are needed, right? That's a key piece to all of this. Housing, workforce development, food, clothing, mental health, and substance abuse assistance. So we believe that, well, first of all, the Muncie Crisis Center will have wraparound services in Muncie Delaware County. But we know that that's really necessary here as well. So we've been having conversations with Jennifer Fox at the Community Foundation, and we are, we are helping to assist and identify where those gaps are, so that the Community Foundation then can help lift up the nonprofits in providing those wraparound services.
When you say wraparound service, what exactly do you mean?
Yeah, so that may be, going back to that slide before, it may be housing situation, shelter, food, education, workforce development. I think it is dependent upon the individual, but knowing that our nonprofits here, we have some really great nonprofits providing a lot of support, but we've also already started identifying gaps that would need to be, at some point, placed, so that here in Henry County, you'd be able to handle those situations as well.
Sure, so let me rephrase my question.
Okay, sorry.
I know the definition's up there. So the wraparound service, this would be your group supporting local agencies and providing these services?
This would be Henry, potentially Henry County Community Foundation, helping to support the nonprofits that are already existent. And then we, as IU Health Foundation, are helping them identify. We do have some potential opportunities. I don't know if Jamie, you want to share that?
Sure, yeah. I apologize for being a little bit, the background was horrible. But as Michelle said, we have a.
Can you come to the microphone? Yeah.
You could go right there, Jamie.
Thought I was really loud, but.
You're loud, but we're webcasting as well.
Oh.
Can you hear me okay? Is it red or green? It's, it is red. It's.
Okay, is that better? Okay, good. So as Michelle said, we have a grant fund that we call Community Impact Investment Fund. And that fund is meant to address social impediments to health, such as, you know, services that address those gaps that Michelle just described. So it's a very targeted grant fund, and it's actually meant to get upstream, if you will, to address housing, workforce development, education, those issues that can negatively impact downstream health outcomes, you know, to kind of keep people out of the ED. We want to keep people healthy and provide wellness and all of that. And so that fund is targeted specifically to address those gaps and those services. And so we've talked with the Community Foundation, with others, about potentially submitting a grant application to, to support some of that wraparound support that's needed in Henry County and where the gaps are.
An ED in this case is an emergency department at the hospital, is that when you say ED?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
And I know at the Newcastle, somebody from EMS mentioned ID, and I don't know what that stands for. Mention ID services and ED services. Do you have any idea?
I don't know what ID is.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I had a same question. If, if they get, have an emergency situation, would you still be able to take them up to IU Hospital? Which way we did over the years at the Sheriff's Department?
Sure, if, if it's determined that that level of care and service is needed. For example, Michelle gave that example of somebody with suicidal thoughts, ideation, who has a plan and is in need of, we know this is, requires a level of care that the emergency department, the hospital would provide, absolutely. I think what we're talking about is, you know, those situations where the emergency department, the services of the hospital aren't needed, and we don't want to see these folks get tied up in the criminal justice system. So that's really what that Crisis Center is meant to do.
What, what level of wraparound services or what health insurance, health benefits, how much direction would be provided for people going through this portion of their life to get those benefits in place? I know there's FSSA, you can go and do that, but getting somebody to do that is a huge issue.
Yes.
So I don't, what, how's that being addressed?
That's a great question. I, I, have we talked about that through the Crisis Center?
I don't know if we have necessarily talked about that through the Crisis Center. I would guess that it would be part of that workforce development and kinda getting them up on their feet, right? And then if there are ways for them to be able to have some type of health insurance, then I would guess that they would work with them on that, just like they would their housing or, like I said, workforce development or whatever that might look like. I mean, the, the goal here is, is that those individuals that would be coming to the Crisis Center, that they would eventually not be coming to the Crisis Center, right? And that they would be self-sustainable, but we know that that's not gonna happen overnight. So whatever those key pieces are and what those barriers are for that individual person, I would foresee that this team of individuals would help with that to try to push away the barriers for them to be able to be self-sustaining.
Yeah, and in the Crisis Center, and this, this may be a little bit, that's a great answer, Michelle. The Crisis Center is, is a nonprofit, and so folks served there will be served, right? Like they would if they were going to any other nonprofit organization. And so, but I think as Michelle said, part of that wraparound support, life skills, kind of getting on your feet. If you don't have health insurance, I think that's kind of case management, kind of some of what can be offered to help folks get, yeah, get with.
Absolutely.
Good question, yeah.
Yeah, just, so the Muncie mission, one of the wraparound services that we know, that I know had come up several times in our conversations with the folks here in Henry County, is what kind of wraparound services are there that are easily tied to the Muncie Crisis Center? One of them being the hub, which actually does connect with shelter providers, housing counselors, other supportive services. I'm not, I don't need to list all of that, but they actually do serve Region Six, in which Henry County is. So that means that, yes, this would be some, this would be one of those wraparound services that the Muncie Crisis Center would, would definitely call on, and they do serve Henry County, right now, currently, anyway. So the Henry County and the IU Health Foundation partnership. So what we know is this is a regional problem, right? This is not isolated to just one specific area. I'm sure that every one of you in here know of someone, whether that's a family member or a friend, that has suffered from one of these issues. I mean, I can unfortunately name five people that I know their families very well that have passed away since November because of one of those issues, all here, you know? And as I told my parents the other day, something has to stop, like we have to stop this somehow. And we know that this is a really large elephant. There's been a lot of great work going on in this county for several, several years. But we can't do this alone, right? It's impossible. IU Health can't do it on their own. Henry County can't do it on their own. Delaware can't, can't do it on their own. This is definitely something that we need to collaborate and provide some kind of regional solution. So we feel like that this is the first step to that. So there are, those of you who have packets, there are five different options, and I'm not gonna bore you necessarily with going line by line. What we are requesting or is potentially using the abatement dollars only from the opioid settlement funding that you all are receiving to help supplement this piece and, and be able to provide this service for Henry County. So this first option will show 100% of abatement of Henry County and all entities. So that would be, as Kenan said earlier, we were at City of Newca, we were at Newcastle City Councilor on Monday, council meeting on Monday, this would be all towns and cities within Henry County. You can see this track of kinda broken up into three-year sections with 1,050,000 for each three years. We do know that there would need to be additional Henry County funding sources, depending on which option would be chosen, and you can see that in line two. In option two, we're looking at 100% of abatement for all entities, but this provides a little bit different. We know, and I just saw the graduation on social media this last weekend, we know that the JCAP program is something that was just formed, and I believe you just had your first graduates go through. That's fantastic. We want, we definitely support that, hope that that continues. We want to see that continue, because this is not a one-size-fits-all package. So in this scenario, we're looking at $75,000 for a JCAP program expansion for years one and two. The third option is if only Newcastle and Henry County, it looks exactly the same as option two. It's just, it just takes out the other entities, since we've not had conversations with all the other towns and cities. Option four is a little bit more. That's $200,000 for the JCAP expansion program. And the only difference between option four and option five is just Newcastle versus all towns and cities.
And you put 100,000 per year on that one instead of 75?
I actually put two, I actually put 200,000 in the first year only because of the amount of abatement that you're receiving in year two.
For JCAP?
Yeah, for JCAP.
So we could look at that as 100?
Yes, absolutely.
100 per year over two years?
Yes, 100%. The next few slides, and I'm just gonna go through those quickly, have to do with which, what the 100% abatement is for the towns and cities within Henry County for years one through six. And then here's the other piece of this. We believe this is a true partnership. As I said to you, we believe that the only way that we can even possibly combat this issue is if we all work together. So Henry County commitment of, let's say, three years, a little over a million, the IU Health Foundation would 100% match that one-to-one. So if you are committing the little over 1 million, we would also commit the little over 1 million. And the same for the years three through si, or four through six. So that shows you how important it is for us that we work together regionally and how much we believe in this project. So potentially, partnership total would be 4.2 million between the two.
I have a question, Michelle.
Yes.
Debbie, our auditor, just gave us a breakdown. It looks like the amount that we've received from the state on opioid settlement is only like 49,000. So how do we commit like a million when we only have 49,000 in the bank? Oh, do we? I must have looked at the, the-
The restricted.
The restricted.
I bet so.
Thank you.
Or the unrestricted, one of the two.
Thank you.
So our commitment to you as the IU Health Foundation would be the one-to-one match, a three-year, six-year total. You would have Henry County representation on the Muncie Crisis Center Board Committee. That was incredibly important to our team, and I'm gonna be really honest, as a Henry County girl, super important to me because I wanna make sure that we have our voice as well. And then all Henry County individuals brought to the Muncie Crisis Center from law enforcement and/or the hospital would be admitted. And the only reason right now that we have that stipulation, hopefully that would go away and it would be walk-ins as well. But as you probably all know, when you start something new, you're not really 100% certain what that's going to look like. And so we know at least we could have a little control over how people are walking in the door for, for a little bit until we get things situated.
And Michelle, and that's true in Delaware County, too?
Yes, that's true across the board.
Just to get a feel for the volume of folks walking coming?
Yes, absolutely.
And then expanding as we, you know, kinda get a feel for the volume.
Absolutely.
And you intend to also speak to Blackford and Jay, which are IU Health hospitals, to get them into this regional action of four county rather than two county ultimately?
That's right, yeah. I think conversations are already underway in Blackford, and I know we're kinda poised to have conversations in Jay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And we've also been having, the hospital has had representation in all of our convers, in all of our conversations as well. The local hospital, Henry Community Health.
They've been at the table most meetings.
Since the beginning, yeah.
And they seem to be totally on board, knowing that their staff and capabilities-
I think they're being inundated, yes.
When it comes to crisis individuals, either because of SUDs or because of mental health.
Absolutely.
They don't have the personnel to handle any kind of numbers whatsoever. And I think our new correctional facility is just 20 minutes from where this is supposed to be. It's on Hoyt, if I looked it up right.
Yep, I believe so.
The former bar?
Yes.
Workman's Bar?
Former bar.
How appropriate.
Little ironic.
But it'd be put to good use if this, and it's not if this materializes, this is materializing.
Oh, yes, it's opening in 2023.
Several million dollars themselves, haven't they not?
That's right.
The city of Muncie has already put in-
Yes, they've put in 2 million.
Already.
Already.
So it is going to happen.
It is happening, and we, and we've already hired staff.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, as I understand it, the 2 million does not include any of Muncie's or Delaware County's opioid settlement funding. And that conversation, I think the mayor is really spearheading that as well. And an application was submitted to the state. This opioid settlement funding is so complicated, I think, as everybody knows, like, you know, of the dollars pouring into the state, 50% of them stay with the FSSA, and then 50% are distributed to localities across the state. The money that's staying at the state, they've issued an RFP, or they did issue an RFP to match the localities, you know, whatever, whatever programming or investments the localities were making, they could apply for matching funds from the state. And an application was put in, I think, to match Delaware County's investment. So we've got funding coming from lots of sources to try to help, you know, sustain the center.
And Delaware slash, with the help of Ball State and Muncie, they're going after some of that 25 million from FSSA. And I know our grant writer, Glenn, sat in on one of those meetings, but it was an extremely short period of time to get our ducks in a row.
It was.
So a lot of people that kind of deleted their possibility. They had to have almost an existing program in place to go after those kind of monies in less than a month.
I know. There was a lot, I, I've heard that there was considerable feedback given to FSSA about that. That timeline was too short for people to really take advantage. I don't even know how many applications went in, because, you know, it was, even if you had something going, it was hard to get in on the timeline, let alone if you hadn't really mobilized yet. But, yeah, that, that was, that was unfortunate. I'm sure that's a lesson learned for them, that it was too tight, yeah.
What your ask is, is to use the abatement monies, which the state's delineated what it could be used for. And I know, sitting in at Newcastle's meeting, Joel said that this definitely qualifies under the regulations for the abatement uses. And on top of this, we would be getting 887,000 over the next 10, 12 years, hopefully, if it still materializes, unless they're advertising. We'd get that on top of what you're looking at here for other needs, whether it be JCAP in the future, or, and I know our grant writers working on things to, to help in that department as well through the commissioners. So you're just looking at that portion, which is almost 70% of everything we're getting.
Knowing that the unrestricted, you know, that is obviously at your discretion on how you would want to use those dollars.
My understanding is, just like ARP, the commissioners are going to have a say with the, the plan, the project plan. So, and one of them's walking in, and I know Bobby has been part of these meetings that you've had, like the meeting in the new, old Mariana, now Law Offices.
I know.
A meeting. And Angela has been on board with this. Butch has been on board with this. But there's about 12 other individuals from Henry County that's been part of these meetings. So I'm, they're welcome to come up when you're done with your presentation and give their thoughts as well. If this is needed, the sheriff, whether this is needed. Because right now, I think if somebody's in a crisis, they go to the emergency room. And if the emergency room says, "We can't handle this, we're full," which happens a lot these days at a lot of emergency rooms, it's incarceration. I mean, they go, make a B-line up to our new correctional facility. And is that what they really need? Or do they need someone to help them with the SUDs and the mental health crisis? And I'm assuming the people you hired are licensed to do exactly what Henry County Health has told us they're, they're burdened with, overburdened with?
Yes. I mean, I, open to questions.
I was just gonna add, I think, a comment that the sheriff made at the meeting a couple nights ago. Kind of, the week is a blur, I don't know what, a couple nights ago, it felt like. That very often, officers, when they are taking someone to the ED, they have to stay there and wait for them to be seen, and sometimes that's hours where they're not kind of where they're needed, right? They're sitting in an ED waiting room. I think I heard that from the other night. So that's another thing. It ties up resources, you know, folks having to be taken to the ED and jail.
Questions? Does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm just not very familiar with opioid settlement. And I've been looking at the different options, and I don't know if it's you or Kenan. Can you talk through how much we're getting in total, and is this asking for monies beyond the opioid settlement?
No, it's, it's broken into approximately 70% abatement. And the 70% abatement, the, the state has provided about a five-page enumeration of what qualifies to be, this program definitely, and Joel on Monday night confirmed, definitely falls under the abatement criteria, would fall under that. So over the next 12-plus years, hopefully, we, as Henry County, would be getting over 2 million on abatement. That's 70% part, but also our, it's actually unrestricted funds, not restricted, as I misquoted earlier. 887,400 and some odd thousand over the next 10 or 12 years in unrestricted. And that's above and beyond, so we'd have over 847,000 over that period of time, not looking at that part that they're, they're wanting to tap. And again, this is up to the commissioners as far as the programming. So I would entertain Butch or Angela to come down if they have any thoughts. I know they've been at at least three or four meetings each. We've had, I think, six, seven meetings, starting last summer. So, but anyway, there's 887,000 above and beyond this. And I was up in Indy yesterday, and Kathy Williams, who's a county council in Wayne County, she's trying to get something going with Reed for Randolph, Fayette, Union, and Wayne. Very, she was very interested, and she asked me to send her the YouTube of this, because they just have initial talks, and she was very interested in what I was sharing was being proposed here, because they have the crisis situation as we do, as most places do.
I really like this concept. I was in a Zoom yesterday with some work colleagues, and it was specifically talking about college students and just how mental health is everything right now. And it's just, between that, between, I think, the impact of the pandemic, you know, we really do need to be making significant investments in mental health. And it occurs to me that if we get people help, they're less likely to be incarcerated. So that saves the county money. We're getting them resources. I mean, it's an investment, but it's an investment in our people. And I, I don't know how the money is gonna work and all that, like, that's, those are- are looming questions. But I really like the concept and I think this would be a big step forward.
Thank you, Betsy. And to your point, the five people that I shared were from the ages of 20 to 34, that I, you know, that I personally know just since November.
And they passed away?
Yeah.
From Henry County? Or from this area?
From this area. I mean, they were, they had some type of connection with Henry County.
Since November.
Yeah.
Can I ask about the timeframe related to this request? Are we needing to have commissioners' action on programming before we talk about funding? Or is there any kind of limit to, are you guys needing a decision on it by a certain timeframe?
No, we don't need a decision today.
This is just to introduce, we started, we're about to introduce this on the 28th of August.
We said.
And a big pause button as more information was coming down. There was a change of venue in Muncie.
There was.
But, yeah, the commissioners are going to have to, kind of like ARP, develop the plan. But they have a, they have a position at the table, as does Angela, as does Butch, as does Henry County Health, as does nine, well, 911 has been part of that.
Does the council then vote on the funding after the plan has been introduced?
Yes, it would be like ARP.
Yeah, commissioners develop the plan, but however, whatever, whatever the, the
Yeah. So Butch, I know you've been at several of these meetings.
Yeah, I think I only missed one. There it is. I think I only missed one. And the last one that I was at, which was the one before the last one you guys had, there were some questions that come up. I'm not opposed to this. I was 100% for it up until some questions was asked. And, I mean, basically, I'm, I'm just a citizen of the community. I agree with the concept up to the point when I found out that if the sheriff runs across somebody, or one of his deputies has somebody, and they need, they need some intervention, and he has a place in Muncie, which is fairly close to take them to, transport them up there too, that's great. But if they're, if the time that they're going to be there is limited and they maybe get some, an evaluation and some guidance, and then they were told that they need to go see this, or do this, or this, whatever those things are that needs to help them, then, then they got to get back to Henry County. And if we don't have that resource here to do that for them, they're not going to stay in Delaware County. They're going to come back here if we don't have the resource. So, I'm sorry.
No.
But to give, to give them, to give the million dollars that we, that million dollars, we could make a lot of resources here locally, or at least part of it, put it here, for some resources that we need. We, we need, we need a place that we can put, I thought, and I think many of the other people thought in the beginning, that once they got up there, they would be there for 24 hours, or 72 hours, or some length of time, and get some, get some assistance and help. And then we talked about maybe where the money would come from, I don't know, having some kind of a satellite location here, we mentioned that, so that when they come back, they'd have someplace maybe, if they didn't have a place to stay, they'd have a place to stay. And then those wraparound services could be provided here for them. If we don't have any money to provide wraparound services for our Henry County residents here, it's really not going to do any good, I'm sorry. But it's not going to do any good for us to transport them to Muncie for four hours or six hours, and then, at the most, 24 hours. But last I heard, you didn't have any beds, so they're not going to be able to lay down.
Well, well, first of all, completely understand and completely agree with you. So I think that, I apologize if there's some kind of miscommunication. First of all, if, even though it says 23 hours, if the, if our team doesn't feel like that they're ready to leave, they're not leaving. It's a matter of walking outside and walking back in for another, if it's another 48 hours, it's another 48 hours. So when we say that there are no beds, there would be someplace for them to rest because obviously, it's a 24-hour facility. To address the transportation issue and the wraparound services here, completely know that those are problems and, and gaps here. That's why, number one, we're having conversations with the community foundation about how can we lift up the wraparound services and the nonprofits that are already here that are serving, but maybe still do have gaps, knowing shelter is one of those. And that ties into what Jamie was sharing about the IU Health Foundation grant and that possibility. So the community investment, impact investment grant, and we've already started having conversations with Jennifer about potentially that being part of that wraparound service to help lift up. And that grant, Butch, and if I'm saying something incorrect, but that grant is a max of $2 million over the course of three years, and 25% of that can be capital. So if that is the remodeling or whatnot of an area that could potentially be a shelter here, then that's what would happen. As far as a satellite, I think that there's potential for that down the road. This is step one. I think the, the satellite piece would definitely be something that we would talk about down the road and would potentially work. I think that that actually sounds like a great idea, just like I did at the beginning. We're just not ready for that quite yet, if that makes sense. So.
And, and I agree. I, I just, and I hate, I hate that, I don't know, I hate that I came forward in a, in this setting. I wish I'd have been at the last meeting because I could have voiced this, because I, that's where it was at.
And at the last meeting, we talked about the, the grant, we talked about the, where those wraparound services need to be lifted up here, because we had some major discussion with Jennifer, especially, I think, afterwards about what that might look like.
So if we, if the county.
Yeah.
Spends the million dollars, takes the opioid money countywide and sends it to Delaware County for the center up there that we have access to on a limited basis. And then, then we're, we're still hoping on a grant so that we, and if we get it, great, so that we can do something, satellite services or something here locally, because it's not going to do any good to a person that has a substance abuse problem or mental, and those things don't get fixed overnight.
No, absolutely not.
They're long-term. I mean, we need clinicians, we need, we need people who can, can deal with them either in group settings or individual settings for long periods of time. And that costs money.
Yep, completely agree. Do you want to?
Yeah, I guess I would just, yeah, and I, I absolutely appreciate that sentiment. I feel like, you know, behavioral health services are under-resourced across the state. We all know that. IU Health is, I can, I can assure you, is taking a really hard look at where the gaps in services are around mental health in particular, beyond the crisis center, right? We need outpatient treatment, we need inpatient beds, we need all of it, youth services. And so, your point is well-taken. I think with, I think the goal with the crisis center is to get folks, first of all, to divert people from the ED and the jail was kind of the primary intention, and kind of provide that triage in this place, to kind of figure out what they need, you know, what, what's happening, right? What, what do they need? And then we do have, there is capacity, and I think this would be a really good exercise for us to go through maybe in the next meeting, is to kind of see what is the capacity in Muncie and the region for outpatient treatment, residential treatment, all of the continuum of care, where, where is their capacity so we know where folks could go from the crisis center, right? Because I think, to your point, Michelle, I mean, it'd be better to kind of expand services in a place than just try to start up a whole new facility some, somewhere, right? Like, let's try to figure out where we have capacity, where we need to shore up capacity and put dollars there. But I, yeah, I think that's a good exercise to go through in the next meeting, is kind of mapping the gaps in the continuum of care.
Yep.
And to better understand where people go for treatment, right? We know wraparound services, I feel like we've got some good discussion going, but what, if they need outpatient treatment, if they need residential treatment, what are those options? Where are they located? What are the organizations? I think that's a really good exercise maybe to go through. Maybe that would provide some reassurance to.
And as, as long as, I'm not saying not have them in Muncie, or Anderson, or anyplace else, as long as the people, as long as the sheriff doesn't have to keep transporting them, and as long as they have transportation, one way or the other, to get to those places on a daily basis.
Yes.
But at the same time, I'll guarantee you, if you take an assessment of Henry County, there is enough people in Henry County that either have substance abuse problems or mental health issues, either from the substance abuse or just from daily living, that need, maybe just not being put in someplace, but, you know, need somebody to talk to and stuff.
Yes.
And we need that here to be able to do that locally, I think.
Yes, completely.
As opposed to sending them up there. Again, a million, a million dollars, I'm just using around figures, a million dollars goes to Delaware County, and that's all right, but are we getting our bang for our buck here in Henry County? And, and I don't mean that negatively. I just mean that, that, and I'm going to ask you a question, because the last meeting I was at, I asked this question and I got the answer. Maybe the answer's changed. Are you going to have any beds up there? Because if people are there 23 hours, they're going to have a place to lay down and rest.
I think, and I think the word beds is probably where we're getting hung up. Are we, is this an inpatient facility? No. Is there going to be a place for someone to rest? 100%. So I don't, you know what I mean? When I hear the word beds, I think of an inpatient facility, that they're going to be there for six weeks, not someplace where someone will rest. Obviously, it's a 24-hour-a-day facility, right? So there would be a, a bed, I would imagine, or someplace for them to rest, obviously. So I apologize for the confusion there, but I hope that that is the best, I mean, that's the best way that I, when I hear beds, I think of an inpatient.
We're going to have to cut this off.
Okay.
Because we have some council members that are going to have to leave.
I'm just not negative against it. I just think.
I understand. Sheriff, Angela, I wish you would come up here because you've been working on live, you've been working on a CDC grant.
I'll be done by the time you get here.
What I want to recommend is that, you know, this is not a bolt that light me. Nobody needs to be in a hot fire hurry to spend this money. I understand it burned the hole in somebody's heart. But we got, there are, there, there are all kinds of things that we still need to do and to answer for what's right for Henry County, and there needs to be more people at the table. This was the start. We have to have a start of this thought. We've got an idea. And so now, we need to be able to bring in the rest of our incorporated towns and the sheriff, his designation, and all of these people that have inputs, still haven't seen many, you know, we had one or two people from the hospital, but I'm sorry, I don't feel like we've got complete hospital representation. We have representation from Newcastle Main Street, which I don't think you may wrap around, but I need, there's a couple more people at the hospital that I wish would weigh in. I haven't had a physician weigh in yet. Would like that. So, I'm going to wait that way.
Okay, thank you.
I, I agree with what she said. I, I want to make something really clear and correct a statement that's been made several times. We do not incarcerate people for mental illness. And I don't want that used, I do not want that statement used at, to, to banter this up. We do not incarcerate people for mental illness. We incarcerate people for committing crimes. If we incarcerate for mental illness, I would probably end the jail and not be the sheriff. So no, I just, I don't want that used because that's, that is a, that's a, that's a, it's taking it way out of context there, so.
Thank you. So this was an introduction. There had been seven or eight meetings probably over the past nine, 10 months. They presented at the Newcastle City Council. They had lots of good questions there as well. So proposals have been sent. Those who have a vote at the table have been given a package, including the towns. You're looking into some legal things that the state said regarding the amounts the towns are going to get, so we'll get that back to the towns, what that ruling is. So thank you very much. This is a first step. And I know when we attended the JCAP meeting, one of the things that they mentioned was we need transition help after they are released, some kind of transition center. And I know that's what Tisha Lindsay from Dearborn County said, it's vitally important that there be some transition. You just don't let them out and expect them to be on automatic pilot and everything goes well. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Before I forget, Kenan, what, what are we paying or have appropriated for behavioral health in the county right now?
Well, right now, the state dictates that we pay Meridian about five, 252,000.
Was it 500?
Yeah, 270, I think.
Two seven, oh.
They didn't bill us one year, so we, we owe them two years, which we didn't budget for. So, yes. And there is legislation before the, if you look at your Henry County email today, AIC put out an alert bulletin to contact your legislators involving that exact, exact situation relating to the comprehensive, like the state mandates that we take. So read over that if you haven't gotten on your Henry County email. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have an EMA update by Tim Welch.
Tim Welch, Henry County EMA update, kinda. So I came for two reasons. One was a resolution that we didn't quite get prepared in time, so I apologize for that. That's, I need to follow up with that, so I apologize. The second reason I was here is to discuss a program that we, I've been working together with the Health Department, and it's, it's great, but I've been advised, counsel, that we're not quite prepared to discuss that here tonight. So I'm working through quite a bit of details. And before we go into too many details here, I'd like to get all the ducks in a row, t's crossed. So I appreciate your time, but I don't want to take up any time for something we.
I appreciate it. You, you mentioned something more specifically at the Newcastle.
Yep.
City Council, so I thought, just to be informed, since I was a former educator, that we might know what's going on if it has money attached to it, but thank you.
I appreciate it.
For your willingness to come here. Appreciate it. I know you've been doing a lot of work and a lot of research to shore that up. Next, we have additional appropriations. I have Henry County Memorial Park, additional appropriation of $16,777.68 rental fund to the following, $12,985 removal of trash compactor, install a dump bed body on an existing park vehicle, $37,9268 for the remaining balance of a 2023 John Deere Gator purchase. Susan, you're liaison for the park. Do you have any comments on this?
I do have just a few budget questions. Debbie, do you know how much we already appropriated from that fund for this year compared to how much comes in?
I don't know. Kenan, is that the one I just gave you today?
It is.
Can I draw it?
The fund number is 400. That's about half of 150. But it's in Ori.
So I should have asked Debbie that ahead of time, so that's my fault. But I know this is an expense that the park needs covered, and they had hoped to take some of that from either food and beverage or ARP funds, and it wasn't a good fit. So this is equipment that they need, and I would like to see them get it. I just want to make sure we're not draining out that fund inappropriately. So.
We budgeted $16,000.
And how much do they usually bring in each, I mean, do you have a ballpark?
Right now, there's a current balance of $59,000 in there, and they've spent out $14,000. Yeah, they've already spent out $14,000 of it.
So you guys.
$59,366 and $12,000.
Were you thinking something different?
Yeah, we, we only, we appropriated $16,000, but we haven't spent, we spent ARP money. You, I'm sorry, year-to-date expenses, I'm sorry, you're, I'm wrong. I was looking at that. Year-to-date expenses are $1,200, sorry. But there's $59,000 in there.
And we appropriated 16, or we, we budgeted 16, sorry. Okay. So I actually, I feel comfortable with that email, and I would go ahead and make a motion that we grant this additional appropriation for $16,778.
Second. Moved and seconded by Betsy. Okay. Any other questions? If not all in favor of this additional appropriation from Oriole Park, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Passes 7-0. Transfer of funds, we have the Health Department, that is 4878 from new vehicles to nursing supplies. I would entertain a motion if there are no questions. It's been moved by Harold.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? If not all in favor of this transfer of funds, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Passes 7-0. Highway Department, that was given to us at my table, and, let's see if I can find it. There we go. This is budget transfer at labor position of $50,000 from gas and oil to labor, and this is. oil to labor, and this is from the eleven seventy-six fund, and monies are there, but it requires council approval. Um, I would entertain a motion, but if you have questions, uh, Joel is here.
Make the motion to, make the motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Been moved by Betsy and seconded by Susan, any questions, comments? Joel is here. If not all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. This is a sad one, in my opinion, from Jenny. Long time clerk voter registration office, Nancy Markham's going to retire, uh, she started work in March of nineteen eighty-eight, and, uh, full-time status in November nineteen eighty-eight, and we are here to consider, uh, her payout for sick leave of twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. And her last day, I'm trying to read Jenny, when, when is her last day? April 6th, okay. And she's not here, but thank her for her dedication to that position. If I ever have a question, it's answered very quickly and promptly and correctly, and it's greatly appreciated. Um, so, we'll have a motion to approve this sick payout for Nancy Markham over her thirty-five years of service to Henry County.
So moved, and I agree, Kenan, it is sad, she's an incredible resource and has been greatly helpful to me as an elected official and candidate, and also as Vice Chair of the party, she's, we're gonna miss her.
Second.
And seconded by Shannon. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this amount for, uh, her sick payout, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, passes seven zero. Uh, we have, did we have something on Landon Dean's retirement?
Yeah, it should be in your packet, is it not?
It is.
It's maybe on the back of one of the pages, I...
It should be the fourth page.
Yeah. Hold on, I haven't got it, did you mic it?
Um, here is a letter from the Sheriff's Department thanking Landon Dean for, um, his service, twenty-six-year veteran officer of the Henry County Sheriff's Office, and he retired on March 22nd, and we're being asked to pay out sixteen thousand twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, um, for sick time payout. To thank, thank Landon for his service and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved by Susan, seconded by Betsy to approve this, um, sick payout of sixteen thousand twenty-five dollars and sixty cents for Landon Dean. Um, I would echo, very similar to Nancy Markham, his, uh, his contribution to, uh, the reserve officers and to the Sheriff's Department, it'll be sorely missed, my understanding from Sheriff Sprouse is that he's going to be the chief Middletown Police Department, and we wish him all the best, so.
Henry County's loss is Middletown's gain.
That is, I would echo that, so, um, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, passes seven zero. Sheriff, wish him the best from the council, please, we appreciate his service. Uh, sheriff contract, uh, this is, we've seen a copy of this a month ago, uh, sheriff wanted a chance to read over it, and we've given an entire month to do so. So, it is up to us now, um, after the commissioners have had a look at it, an approval process, it's up to us to make a motion, um, and the sheriff's here if there are any questions, but again, we've seen this for a month, I don't think it's changed over that month, so. All in favor of, um, motion by Shannon?
Sure, yeah, I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Shannon mumbling off mic, so, was that you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and who would like to second it?
Second.
And seconded by Susan, all in favor of, um, approving the sheriff contract as shared with us, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Sheriff, you have a contract? Sheriff budget request. Uh, Susan Hoon has been, uh, discussing matters with our sheriff, there was a meeting at, uh, his training off, uh, room, um, last week, and, uh, she has some updates to share, and I think she gave us some things by email today, a couple of attachments, I'm gonna turn it over to Susan with whatever she'd like to share.
I just wanted to go through the information I passed on, so there's four, um, areas of potential budget shortfall, the first one is in the vehicle purchase line item, and I did lay this all out in an email, but when we budgeted for the sheriff's vehicles, we budgeted for the base cost of four vehicles, we did not include the outfitting, um, of each car to put all the equipment in. In addition, as I mentioned in the email, there was a car purchased last year that had not yet been paid for, and another vehicle that was totaled that had to be replaced, and all of those things combined will, um, end up with a budget shortfall of a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars in that line item. And, um, the purpose of this conversation is not necessarily that we prepare an additional appropriation for each line item, but the sheriff wanted us all to be aware of these, um, issues, and then to make sure for those that we don't have line items designated for, that it's clear where we're gonna pay each of those from, so, I think for the vehicle purchase, you know, my recommendation is to continue on without an additional appropriation until we run in the red, and then, um, bring it up again at that point, but we can talk through those things at the end. The second line item is for the Joint Drug Task Force that we, um, that the Sheriff's Department runs with Newcastle, and, um, the, the county's contribution to this fund is something that we have not budgeted for in the past, so there's some ambiguity about our participation in it, but the sheriff needs to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to Newcastle, and right now that is not budgeted, and he'd like direction on where that money is gonna come from.
Let me ask Debbie, I, I know, looking through your monthly updates and reports, there's a line item for that, is it?
For what's that?
Uh, the Drug Task Force, I've seen a line item that said something about Drug Task Force in the past, I don't know, according to Susan, we've not budgeted anything the last few years, and, uh, so, I just...
And I know that one thing that, on that Drug Task Force, on the city cash, is that an ordinance? Is that something that we've done by ordinance or resolution that we're gonna pay, or is it just a verbal agreement?
That I don't know, I think that's been the past practice, I think there may be an MOU that's out there from years, eight years ago.
So do we have to do something with that?
Yeah, I'd probably have to take a look at it.
Okay, we need to press pause until we get legal on, do we have an MO, MOU?
Yeah.
Memorandum of Understanding, or do we have a resolution? Yeah, absolutely. Again, I don't have the fund numbers memorized, because there's two hundred and some on.
So, the question of whether or not we have a working contract or MOU for that needs to be resolved, and then also, direction on how we're gonna pay for it, and we can cut, are you ready now, or do you wanna come back?
Hang on, that we're looking...
Okay, we'll wait.
The other thing is, I know that in past practice, that we've never budgeted for the complete of the cars, it was always paid for out of the equipment fund or one of those funds that we, we didn't, that's never been budgeted for, it was always paid.
You're right.
We just bought just the cars.
Yep, I agree.
Last year, I was sitting in on Ares meeting, I think the equipment, yeah, I think they paid for some of that.
Paid for at least one.
Right, of, of the, yes, because I just happened to be at that meeting where they approved some monies for that. Uh, you arm wrestle who's on mic?
No arm wrestling, you wanna go ahead?
I just wanna comment on, uh, the outfitting the cars, that, and the statement about, we've taken it out of the equipment fund, that equipment fund, what, what they're calling equipment fund is a commissary fund, and what I have noticed is, um, we're, we're taking a lot of operating expense money out of the commissary fund, and I, I don't believe that is what the commissary fund is for, because where does that, where does that stop? I mean, if you say, well, you're gonna have to outfit your cars out of your commissary fund, um, how about we just buy the cars out of the commissary fund? So, we, we are, and I don't know why, and I, and I'm, I'm interested in finding out, why have we been having us take day, or yearly operating expenses out of our commissary fund?
One thing I learned yesterday up at the State House, um, you probably, you have your own Sheriff's Association, we have an Association of Indiana Counties that lobby very well for us with the senators and legislators, one of the comments he made yesterday, someone alluded to the commissary fund, and someone said, that's the sheriff's slush fund, that they can, because the State Board of Accounts don't specifically designate what can and cannot come out of, and that's one of the few, it's used that way around, is that best practice? Probably not.
Yeah, no.
But it is that way throughout the state.
I don't like the, the term slush fund, however, um, what is, it surely is not the sheriff's slush fund, it appears to be the council and the commissioner's slush fund, because they're the one directing us to, you're gonna buy your...
Mr. President, where do you think you're gonna be at your conference?
You direct us to do a whole lot, just as, just direct to me to not make a comment in public, so.
I did, but we don't do your budget.
So what, what I know is, it's used that way, because the State Board of Accounts, that's about the only leeway where you're not specified what you can and can't, so if there's any shortfall, I think that does occur throughout the state in all ninety-four, ninety-two counties.
But where does it stop, is my question?
I, it probably stops with you saying, I don't have any more monies left.
If it stops with me, we're not going to outfit our cars out of the commissary fund.
Well, you may not get what you want on your cars.
For clarification, I was at the meeting last week, and one of the prevailing themes was tracking and, and having different line items be, you know, reasonably calculated for those expenses, so it's more understandable, it's more transparent, so, that's why I think part of this conversation is happening today, just for everybody in attendance is, just, just the theme of that meeting and, and overall information purposes.
And that just needs to be a goal of ours as budget hearing, is to delineate some of those categories that are lumped together, like last year, the officers, the road deputies, it was all lumped into one humongous, uh, salary fund, uh, two years ago, and that was broken up, I think at Debbie's request, sounds like we need to do more of that, so that, uh, specifically, no, this is for this purpose, we do have to follow the State Board of Accounts as to what's acceptable line items and, uh, categories.
Kenan, I think, a long time ago, and I, I'm, I think like in the beginning of when you guys started, I think part of the reason we're using that commissary fund, State Board of Accounts said they could, and that was kind of a way to give raises, it kind of freed up some in county general to be able to give employee raises.
And that's my understanding from yesterday, so, I know you have a Sheriff's Association, I would just get and double-check with them, but that's what I got yesterday from the Association of Indiana Counties, that's over about seven different departments that are elected officials.
So you're saying that your understanding is that the council can direct us whatever they want to, to, to pay out of our commissary fund?
I'm saying that that's pretty open for, according to the State Board of Accounts.
That it is, the sheriff's slush fund or the council's slush fund?
Well, again, I don't like the, I don't like the comment, but that's, that's one that people generally understand, it's not dictated by the State Board of Accounts exactly, these items can and these items can, it's not just for commissary, and that's what most, uh, sheriff's departments use for overages in other areas, they can almost willy-nilly.
I don't think the council's ever directed the sheriff to take money out of the commissary fund, as much as, as the sheriff's budget would get shorted, they would be willing to, right?
It has been done in the past.
I don't recall us.
What I, what I see, what I see happening is, just like the Loewit Fund, it's, um, we'll, we'll just pull money out of here, we'll short fund the Sheriff's Department, we'll pull it out of, it's just a lot of, uh, just changing around, smoke and mirrors, I'm just saying that, I, I can't, we only have X amount of dollars that we generate in commissary, where does that stop? And you say, well, you have to buy your, your vehicle lights, that's fifteen thousand per car, it's sixty thousand for four vehicles, that, that would eliminate more than half of the commissary fund, um, and so, I, I just, I, I wanna push back on us being directed to, um, pay for operating expenses out of our, out of our commissary fund.
Okay, I can tell you, we're not gonna be directed to do anything that's illegal or not according to Indiana code, I can tell you that.
He also needs to understand, he's not the only one, because you know, my budgets, my budget was cut, all of my supplies one year, and I had to take it, um, Planning Commission, all of their budgets, all of their supplies are cut, they have to take it out of one of their funds. Surveyor, their supplies were cut, um, yeah, Jenny, the clerk's office, prosecutor's office only, and, um, assessor, they only have salaries in their budget for county general, they have another fund, they have to take theirs, so it's not just, I don't want you to think it's just you, all of us have to do it, that's the way we give employees raises, because we don't have a lot.
I've got a question. Do we still have that fund we created a few years back, was originally supposed to be only for, uh, fire departments, police, so forth, or sheriff's department?
The safety lit, the safety lit, and I think in the past it might've been used for things other than, and we, we, I think we've rectified that, it is supposed, it is specifically supposed to be used.
Do we still have that, and how much do we have in it?
It's quite a bit. I wonder what the balance is as of today.
I think we budgeted all safety lit last year, so those monies have been budgeted.
We did.
Um, so, the next two items are hiring bonuses, the sheriff is requesting, um, hiring bonuses for three new hires, and that money is not in his budget, and the, in addition, I wanna make sure I get this right, but the county owes five thousand dollars already committed, and that money is not budgeted.
I think there's four, three or four thousand dollars still in the hiring bonuses.
And that comes from ARP? Okay, so, if ready to pay those, then...
Is it three or four thousand, Debbie? Three thousand dollars in ARP?
So those monies are already accounted for in ARP?
We could back out the, the, uh, the three out of the five, that's, so, I was not aware of this.
Okay, okay.
I just look at that fund.
So, then this issue would just be then the fifteen thousand dollar for the new hires that we're going to vote on after this? Are there two?
You need two more thousands to make the other. Two more thousand, there were five thousand unpaid costs.
And three thousand left in ARP?
Yeah.
Okay, so seventeen there, and then, oh, go ahead.
The five thousand, we're kinda confused, the five thousand unpaid promises, I don't...
It was paid out by the previous administration, if I understand.
What, what?
Go ahead.
That's what, are you talking about the ARP funds? Is that what you're talking about?
That was with a thousand dollar, thousand dollar sign-on bonus.
I don't know where, where, what fund it came from, but our last hiring process, uh, we promised thousand dollar sign-on bonuses for road deputies, um, what apparently had happened is there was, they were, they were paying out hiring bonuses to, um, jail employees, and so that, that diminished the funds, so we have five new officers that have been hired, and, and we're past the time of when they were doing...
I think the motion was for jail.
Yeah, I think that ARP, let me go get the ARP thing moving.
Yeah, I, I really think sheriff, because I made the motion, at the time, we were still under that federal court order, that we were way short by the federal court order, I believe my motion was, they'll, they'll find out, it's in writing, was for hire on the new jail, uh, officers.
Well, and, and it may be, I, I was not privy to that, but, you know, we, we still have hiring bonuses to pay out that were promised that haven't been paid out.
Okay.
But there's promise in writing by contract, how do you know they were promised? Are people telling you they were promised?
Because we advertised it, when we, when we hired them, we advertised a one thousand dollar sign-on bonus.
Okay, well, here, I can read exactly what the, uh, I do, this is my recollection of the motion, ten thousand to provide hiring bonuses for new employees accepting employment as jail officers at the Henry County Jail and Rehabilitation Center after such facility is opened, because I think this was last, uh, early last year, uh, is open for new employees hired by, uh, deputy sheriffs, um...
So, yeah, I think it was changed to be, originally it was set up just for jail officers, then it was amended not too long thereafter for jail officers and deputy sheriffs.
Okay.
The total amount was still ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and that was...
Sounds like we're only, we're only overextended two thousand dollars here.
Okay.
As long as there's not confusion about who is legally allowed to receive those funds, but...
Kenan, I've got a question. Shannon, I've got a question. Maybe I missed it, but it seemed like we went on some fast. What was the comment about the fund that I asked about? Do we still have it? Do we have money in that?
Safety lid, we, we have that, that was passed by several councils ago. And it's supposed to be used specifically for jail, uh, road officers. We don't have a county fire department.
Why couldn't we have, why couldn't we use that, some of that?
Well, we already, uh, we already budgeted all that last year. We might, this summer, we might for 2024, but that has all been used for 2023.
I think we definitely need to look into that.
I, yes, I agree. It sounds like there's several things we need to look into.
There should be quite a bit in there.
There is, but it's already committed for 2023.
So...
Budget hearings, we did that.
I should have been more clear from the beginning that we're not actually gonna vote on any type of additional appropriation today. It's not been advertised, this is just informational, so we can think towards the future. There are also a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, roughly a hundred and sixty thousand of 2022 bills, plus the other vehicle I mentioned earlier, and the sheriff wants us to be aware that those were paid out of the 2023 budget and may make him over-budget this year. So, I just, I think specifically for the joint drug task force money, we need to give direction on where that's supposed to be paid from, and I know Debbie's working on that. And, um, then we may need to, after we vote on the hiring bonuses, we may need to give more direction about that. But I think this is just, as we see administration change, um, the sheriff's department, and the sheriff has a vision for how the jail is gonna, and the department are gonna be run. He's looking for our support and wanting to keep us updated on the budget. So, I just wanted to pass that information on to everybody.
Thank you for doing that. It seems like a springboarding off of our meeting with the sheriff and some of his officers last week, but with specific numbers, so we appreciate that. And she also shared a spreadsheet that kind of summarizes those needs and the shortfall.
Yes, and I should have said that if, in fact, we are short all these funds, it's about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So, that's just something to keep in mind as we move, um, through the year, and we watch these funds to see, um, how they're being depleted. We may be over-budget by roughly this amount of money.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we have a resolution memorializing the matrix pay system for the sheriff's deputies. Uh, this would be Resolution 2023-3-23-004. You have received a copy of this, and there are increments of two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, beginning January first, following the fifth year of service, and an additional sum of two hundred and fifty dollars for annual compensation beginning on January one of each year thereafter, which is known as matrix pay. They are the only department that, uh, that has been approved for, um, that we have any say over. Others from the state, such as the court and prosecutor, judges, et cetera, probation, that is pretty much dictated by the state of Indiana and their codes. So, having read this and receiving it, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So, I will, I'll make a comment that this, um, if we pass this resolution memorializing the matrix, matrix pay system, it does not, it's not going to be, uh, have a budget impact, because the officers that we've lost have more seniority than the ones that would be hired on, so this would not have a budget impact. It would just be a way of making it easier to hire experienced officers, because they wouldn't be losing, um, that matrix pay benefit. And I would make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 2023-03-23-004.
Second.
It's been moved that we pass this resolution by Susan, seconded by Shannon. Um, if, any questions, comments?
Quick comment, I, it gets deputies onto the force, working immediately. We don't have to worry about training, so I think it's a positive step forward for the lateral hire on, so.
Right, I think for the four years I've been involved and Susan's been involved, it's been viewed by this council as a plus, a positive, for reasons you said and probably others. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further comments, uh, all in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven-zero, thank you. We have, uh, our second ordinance of 2023. This is what Susan brought up earlier. This is an ordinance that Joel has prepared for us based on previous conversations. An ordinance amending the 2023 salary ordinance to provide for a hiring bonus for experienced law enforcement officers. Um, the rationale for this, um, was presented at the meeting that we had with the sheriff last week. Anybody wanna make comments? Input? Susan?
Me again, so...
You again, since you introduced it a few minutes.
If we, if we are able to, um, hire laterally by offering a five-thousand-dollar sign-on bonus, that eliminates the cost of the academy, as well as it eliminates us paying, um, officers to be trained while they're not actually working. So, I think it is a net benefit to the county, um, to, again, try to hire experienced officers. So, I would make a motion to pass Ordinance Number 2023-2 in support of the five-thousand-dollar hiring bonus.
It's been moved by Susan, seconded by Kyle. Mike, I'm sorry, I just knew it was that direction. Any discussion? Kyle, you were at that meeting. I did too, not, I didn't look over there, and I thought you sounded exactly like Kyle. We're not looking that way. Kyle, you were at that meeting, do you have anything? I know this comment was made, something about the, the training that was involved. This would be probably a net savings, actually, in the long run, given the amount of time they would be off training. But, any comments before we vote on the motion? I guess not. You made the comments. All in favor of this, uh, signing bonuses? Five, five thousand each? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes seven-zero. Uh, job classification update, Betsy?
All right, I wanna brag for a second. We had four unique agenda items, and we moved through our meeting in twenty-six minutes, which might be a record, and I'm gonna make fun of Chad, because I don't think the meetings used to run that fast. So, we heard from Butch first. He requested that we send the current nine-one-one IT officer, uh, the job description to Wagner Irwin and Shealy. Um, he's hoping to see this be reclassified from a pole to an SO. Um, and he indicated how valuable this person was to him and, and to the county. Um, we passed that unanimously, and so Stephanie's gonna send that to Wagner Irwin and Shealy. Joe Copeland came to us, uh, asking us to move the operator position to truck driver, um, which would reduce operators by one and increase truck drivers by one. It's a budget-neutral move, um, and, uh, actually, truck drivers make less than operators, and he can pay for this out of his budget, so, if, if that were an issue. So, that passed unanimously. The park board, we realized we didn't previously approve the job description for the park superintendent. Um, it was last updated in twenty-two. Um, last month, we did approve the salary, but not the job description, so we did pass that with one dissent. And then finally, Sheriff Sprouls came to us, asked us to change the, uh, titles in the jail, um, moving us to a rank and brass structure instead. Um, the majority of departments already do that, and nothing is changing in pay or job description, it's just intended to communicate, uh, leadership ranks to everybody, uh, especially those incarcerated. I think that's about it, that's...
So, do we need to approve those, uh, as a council? And if so, do we need to take them individually, Joel, or do we need, can we do it?
Yeah, I mean, I think the rank and structure, they're not necessarily changing salaries and jobs, they're more of the internal.
Okay, so, so the recommendation has been made, and it's been acknowledged by the council? Any comments, council? And the other three, we need to vote on separately, or can we take them all three together?
Sending the one to Wagner Irwin and Shealy, does that require council approval? Or was, can, can the job classification committee just do that?
In the past, job classification has gone through Stephanie, Ann, and just did that research and have reported back to us.
Previously, I recall, we just would initiate that on our own.
Right. There's two.
I move to approve them both together.
And so, this is the highway operator to truck driver and approving the, uh, park superintendent contract? Or job description? Job description. Okay, it's been moved by Shannon, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Susan, that we approve the job description. Uh, job classification committees are moving the highway operator over to, uh, truck driver in the highway department and approve the job description of the Memorial Park, uh, park superintendent. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, passes seven-zero. Public comment? Ninety-five minutes. You did better in job description. Commissioners did far better last night with their twenty, twenty-one minutes. I couldn't believe it. Twenty-one minutes. Kudos to those who have quick meetings. Public comment? No, no, thank you, town council members who stuck it out for ninety-five minutes.
Mention to a Jordan?
Yeah, just look at the notes on your itinerary. We have a workstation on the third, and our next meeting's April twenty-seventh. Thank you. Make sure, before you leave, you sign some papers up here for Debbie.